And also under new business, a brief discussion on the ATS lease negotiations. Anyone have any other items to add to the agenda tonight?
No.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda as so amended.
Mr. Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Agenda is approved. Move on to the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to discuss. We have the regular board of selectmen meeting on January 13th. Assuming you both had a chance to take a look at the unapproved minutes.
Yes.
All right, any modifications or changes?
I did not have any.
I didn't have any either. Can I have a motion to approve that as written?
Motion.
All right, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes for January 13th are approved. Okay, the second set of minutes to approve is for a special meeting on February 5th.
Actually, can I stop you for one second? There is something incorrect in here, but it was written as stated. Main Street program is scheduled for a presentation at the February 15th EDC meeting. It's actually February 12th. But that's what was said at the last meeting.
Correct.
So if we could just note that. Yes, thank you. It's not me, it was Robby saying.
Okay, continuing. February 5th minutes, it was a special selectmen, board of selectmen's meeting dealing with the budget workshop. Any changes to the minutes that were presented? I have a motion to approve that minutes as written.
Mr. Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's all approved as written. Okay, at this point I'd open to public comment. Standard rules apply. Please limit yourself to three minutes. And yes, Ed.
I just grateful Sean's benefit because he was not at the charter revision commission's meeting where you guys were, but I know it's on your agenda tonight. So, one of the things that the commissioner is looking at right now is the changing the EOD art charter to reflect that the first selectman is in charge of all hiring and firing at Town Hall, or changing the contract with the employees and leave the charter as it is and keep the board of selectmen as being responsible for the hiring, firing, and review the events or issues with personnel. So, my feeling is that to avoid issues with nepotism and stuff like that, it's a better idea to have the board of selectmen meet as a group in next year's session and discuss those personnel issues and therefore change the contract for relative to the charter. But there's a contract coming up. The second thing is that since you have the charter open right now, maybe it's a good time to look at expanding the board of selectmen maybe to five members. And like I mentioned at the charter revision commission, with the possibility of not having a board of finance anymore. Sometimes, some towns have that structure with a financial director that we have right now. It could be full-time. I think the board of selectmen could handle a bunch of issues and stuff like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, thank you. All right, next item is a selectmen's update, and I'll open this up to my other members on the board. If there are things you want to add, feel free. Update since our last meeting. Haddon Elementary School. I told you last time there was a private school interested in renting the facility. Last week they had their board of directors tour Haddon Elementary. They are still interested in moving forward with leasing it, the entire building. I'm going to talk later on, I have a new business on how we want to move forward with that negotiation. So I am even more cautiously, or more optimistic, but still cautious that this may go through. It looks very positive, at least right now. But I will say personally, I've been a landlord for a number of years, and no longer. And I learned very early, you don't say the deal is done until the check clears the bank. So, but right now, I'm encouraged by it. Community septic was one item that pretty much universal agreement at the presentation on the charrettes that we should move forward with. We did do have a very preliminary design from the town engineering firm. We met this week with representatives from the US Department of Agriculture. USDA makes monies available in forms of grants and loans or bond money to rural towns. And their definition of rural is a population of 10,000 or less. So I met with them, and I wanted to do it early on to make see, I didn't want to meet with them a year into this process and have them say, well gee, if you'd come to us a year ago, we could have helped you. So even though we don't have final designs or anything, we just talked in concept what we're trying to do. They're fine with the concept. They let us know what their requirements are. They did confirm we should be eligible for their funding grants and loan. So that's just something to keep in mind as we move forward. It may or may not be the way we want to go. Tyler Go Water, continuing with the connections as of the end of last month. Thirty-four connections have been made. They've still got approximately 100 connections to finish off. So I said last month, the actual finishing touches on this project, like Duplin Hill Bridge, are going to require paving, so it's going to be spring when it's done. But connections will proceed as long as the weather's good enough to allow it to do it. Last thing I want to talk about is the budget. As I've mentioned numerous times, the budget is in preparation. Department heads, town agencies that we support, like the library, submitted requests of the board of selectmen. We had a series of special meetings last week and the week before to review them. We've pretty much gone through them all and approved them. I just want to help us to take a final look at what all the final numbers turn out, and then we'll be passing the budget on to the board of finance with their action. Again, as I said through all this process, it's open to the public. My recommendation to you is if you have comments, write at this point to the board of selectmen if you would copy these, so I can make sure they get there. And I'm suggesting that, you're welcome to go to the meetings, but there's no guaranteeing, if you're interested in the Brinerd Library budget request, that they can't tell you what night likely they'll be looking at that. All depends on how quickly things go, or sometimes things slow down that you don't expect. So, I'd recommend you at least write them, because your concerns will be there. And again, you're welcome to show up and voice your opinion at the meetings. Couple other things regarding to the budget. The grant list looks like it's going to go up slightly, which is good news. The more than offsetting bad news is from the school district. They're in their budget process as well. It starts with a joint meeting with the school board, with both boards of selectmen and both boards of finance. At that meeting, they let us know that the enrollment numbers, which are taken on October 1, which affect the upcoming year's split on the charge for the school, have changed. Haddon gained eight students, Killinworth dropped 76. An 84 student delta is enough to make roughly a $1 million difference in the assessment to Haddon. Now, million assumes that their budget stays flat. So, yeah, that was against, people are grimacing in the audience, and I agree with that. That kind of hit me, it was a shock. So that's going to have to come up somewhere. Final cautionary note on the budget. The state legislature is in session. They started February 5th. As I've often heard and will repeat, legislature is in session. Nobody is safe. State is going to be looking at their budget. They have historically looked at cutting grants to towns, cutting ESC allotments, cutting town aid roads, cutting low-sip, steep grants, et cetera, et cetera. I haven't seen any proposals to say doing that this year, but it's something to keep aware of. I have met with both the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, which represents all towns in Connecticut, towns and cities, with council of small towns across over the River Cod, to make sure some of our concerns get expressed to the legislators. And I was pleased at the River Cod meeting, a number of legislators were there to actually hear what we had to say with back and forth discussion. We will see further updates to come. Anything else?
Just very quickly, as we mentioned at the last board of selectmen meeting, the Economic Development Commission meeting that's happening, it's a regular meeting on Wednesday at 6:30. We have invited Connecticut Main Street Center to come to a presentation. That was part of the recommendations that came out of the Higginham Center study, the charrettes that were conducted back in November, October, November. So, the town as a whole has a membership to Connecticut Main Street Center. They're part of, it's part of a national program, National Main Street, so Connecticut obviously has the Connecticut chapter. So their, one of their missions is to help revitalize and stimulate downtown areas. The town has been a member. We are not taking our membership to its fullest advantage, so we have invited them. They'll be presenting first at our meeting. Just a quick 30-minute overview about who they are, what they do, how they can help us. It's open to everybody. I hope we have a great turnout for it. And that meeting will probably, very likely, be followed up by a second, more in-depth discussion. It will be a longer discussion. We'll invite the businesses, and that will just kind of help to jumpstart the 90-day action items that we have in that report.
Okay, thank you, Kate. All right, Brenda, do you ask for the board of education?
Yes, thank you. Brenda Buzzy, Board of Education. This is a summation of January's meetings for capital improvements. We recognized the Public Building Committee. We have gratitude, of course, for their work over the years. Those people are Eric Kuchar, Joanna Nesty, Colleen Fitzpatrick, Karen Perry, Sue Williams, Bill Leahy, Robert Bear, Chip Frey, Rob Albert, and Tom Hagerty. They worked on many, many projects at the high school. So they were recognized with a certificate. And then a formation of a new standing building committee to work on some current projects that we've got going on. That was a new committee that formed with Craig Judd, Sean Donilon, and Jim Duffield. Those are community members. And then the board members on that are Ang Lee, Lewitt, and Peter Sonski. The first projects outlined are the fieldhouse at the high school and the oil tank removal at Oakwood and Killinworth Elementary. The Haddon-Killingworth High School fieldhouse project was, we evaluated two architect firms that responded to the RFPs, and they recommended, the subcommittee recommended to the board, and we approved Hibbert and Rosa, Rosa, sorry, Rosa Architects out of Middletown to provide design and construction for the fieldhouse project. We, the board approved the recommendation, and the timeline has been projected for the potential project. This month, the board will consider the project's options and determine if to proceed in the scope of the project. If approved, work will begin in late April. More information will follow when it becomes available with that. We did, as Bob mentioned, we did have the joint meeting of the board of selectmen, board of finance, and board of education with both Haddon and town committees representing. And as Bob also said, the Haddon portion of next year's budget allocate will increase from 5.95% to 61.40%, and Killinworth's decrease from 41.5% to 38.6% toward the budget. The board shared general information regarding the state partnership plan, which is our insurance, which will have impact on the district employees. Continued increases in special education costs, we don't have control over some of those state mandates, and the desire to keep the buildings maintained. The towns did express a desire for the boards to constrain costs and the challenges with supporting an increasing budget in the district. So that's what you guys said. Another business, we have the introduction of new administration. The board welcomed Anne Andriani as the Director of Fiscal Operations for our RSD 17, Jennifer Biermunder as new Curriculum Coordinator for the Literacy and Humanities, and Heather Ragatti as the new Curriculum Coordinator for Math, Science, and Technology. This is kind of good news, because the Curriculum Coordinator positions replace the Assistant Superintendent position, and their former positions will not be replaced, making the hires cost-neutral to the district. We revised the 21-20 calendar, making June 10 the last day of school, bearing no snooty. The Haddon-Killingworth Youth and Services, the Youth and Family Services requested and we granted with board approval to administer their biannual survey of 7th through 12th graders, and that evaluation should be shared with the school and the community, the survey. And then for curriculum update, there are two new courses that we approved for the high school curriculum. Beginning Spanish Conversation, which fulfills a new state requirement for rural language, and the Modern Novel, an English class. You can get any of, our subcommittees posted all their dates for 2020, and they are on our website, as well as the Haddon-Killingworth Administrators Association contract for three years, we decide that, and that can be found under Business Office. And of course, all of our Board of Education meetings are videotaped, and they're under HKTV. Thank you.
Okay. Brenda, I think you meant to say our allocation right now for the split on the budget is 59% up by 5.
58.95.
Okay.
That's what it was. Now it's going to 61.40%. So, there is a significant difference.
A couple of percent makes a big difference on that budget. Okay, thank you. All right, next item we have are tax refunds. We have, on two, three, four, five, for real estate. We do need to discuss one of those. And then one, two, three, four, five more for motor vehicle. You've got those in front of you. The one we need to discuss is the first one, the real estate, it's in red, Tinti Beatrice. She has applied for a refund of $9,986.47. What happened in her case is she paid for her taxes online with a credit card, inadvertently paid twice. Didn't realize it until shortly after she wanted to buy something else online, was told her credit card was maxed out. So her card was maxed out until she can get a refund. She's coming to us for a refund. My recommendation frankly is we tell her to work through her, well, it is what we told her, is to work through her bank. Because if we grant her a refund, and then the bank disallows the charge, then we're out the taxes, as opposed to her working with the bank to correct it. So my recommendation on that one is not to grant the refund at this time.
So it was two separate transactions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she hit the enter key twice apparently. Didn't realize it, obviously, like I said, until sometime later, at some time, it was too late for her to undo it online.
I guess my question is, how would they disallow the charges for the refund?
Well, if we give her a refund, the bank is paying us right now roughly $19,000. Okay? If she gets in to disallow it and cut one of them, they pay us $9,000, and if we refunded her nine thousand.
So processing is one transaction.
No, it processes two transactions, but if they disallow one, and we, well, we collect the second one, but if we refunded her $9,000, and they disallow the other $9,000, we have nothing. And she gets a wonderful Christmas bonus. So I recommend not approving that one. However, the others are routine transactions. I recommend we approve the rest of the list. But to make this clear, can I have a motion on Tinti Beatrice's request?
Yes, I will make a motion not to approve that refund and to recommend for her to contact her bank, her credit card company directly.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. All right, except the other four real estate transactions and the five motor vehicle are routine. I recommend we vote them together with one motion and approve those. And I have a motion to that extent.
With the motion that we approve the five remaining real estate and five remaining motor vehicle.
That's four.
Oh, pardon, sorry, four real estate and five motor vehicle.
All right, we have a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the motion? Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, old business. As Ed has mentioned on the agenda's discussion of charter revision changes, I'm going to ask that we table this. I got some additional information this afternoon from our legal lawyer. It's going to take some time to digest it. I will get it out to you too. But I also want to talk to the lawyer, because I think there's a, the way I read the contract, and that's dangerous, is there's a clause in the contract already that covers what we would need to do. I need to get more information from Nick, to exactly what his concerns are.
Maybe most of the, table the discussion on the charter revision till next meeting.
And just as a point of information, I don't support not having the board of selectmen at lease review terminations. Hiring, we may want to talk about on a case-by-case basis. We may want to modify some of the wording of the charter, but definitely for terminations. So just give some thought to that section of the charter before we meet again. All right. Next item I want to talk about under new business. Chris, I'll go to you for your, there's a request for a waiver of the driveway radius. Do you want to give us some background on it?
Where's the best spot to put this?
For the camera?
That's okay. That's okay. They have to see it, yeah.
Okay. If anybody in the audience wants to see it. Good evening, my name is Chris Bowler. I'm a professional engineer from Higginham. I'm representing the owners Diane Mack and Robin Gilmartin. They have a lot on the east side of Mission Hollow Road, map 14 lot 1. They bought this lot to put a small cottage up on top for a summer home, so they get a good view of the river. As part of that, I'm designing a site plan for the driveway, the house, the well, and the septic system. And as part of that, I'm showing a normal driveway, which designed, which was actually submitted, oh, like back in 2002 or so, that was approved. But since then, there have been public improvement regulations that this driveway could not be built this way. This has a 25-foot minimum radius to Serpentine up the hillside to get up to the top of the house. Right now, under the Public Improvements Section 130B, the minimum driveway radius is 50 feet. And I understand most of this, the maximum driveway radius was looked at as far as using fire trucks and large, maybe large town vehicles. Basically, a 50-foot radius is for a tractor-trailer. It's known in the design standard, what's called a WB 50 radius, and that takes 40, 50-foot, 60-foot trailers. You'd need that for a hook-and-ladder truck. That's probably maybe 60 feet or maybe more in length. Just from my work within other towns and other fire departments. Most towns have a 25-foot minimum radius for the driveways, and they go towards, the larger radius is when you get into commercial designs. If you had, say, a condominium complex up here, you wouldn't be able to do a 25-foot radius a lot of times, especially if you had multiple stories. For single stories, they probably still stick with a 25-foot radius, because you wouldn't need a hook-and-ladder to get up to, for stories, obviously just off the ground. First selectman, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and he asked to show a driveway with a 50-foot radius, so he could see what we're talking about, and also talk to the town engineer to see what he thinks of my design, or trying to get, asking for the waiver for the 50-foot. This is, I came up with this today to show a 50-foot radius minimum, and that's a centerline radius. Here's another option. The only way I could come in is on a skew. I wouldn't be able to have a turn that goes in both directions. The fire truck would have, if a truck would have to come in from this direction, make the 50-foot radius and stop here. This is a maximum grade of 15%, which is allowed in the required in the regulations. 15% has to be paved, 15% driveway slope is the maximum slope required in almost every town in Connecticut. The problem I have with this, I still can't meet all the regulations. I can't turn this way if I come in this way with any kind of vehicle, especially a fire truck. I have no way to make a turnaround. If I turned around up this way, I would have probably a 40-foot cut into the hillside, which is basically impossible to get down. Or I'd have to go all the way across and create another driveway to come down this way, but then I would be exiting in this direction. No matter what I do with the 50-foot radius, it doesn't work. So, we're asking for a waiver of this to allow a 25-foot minimum radius. I did get a communication from the town engineer, Jeff Jacobson. On Thursday last week, I asked him to, just to give a note, because he did have this original plan, and asked him what his thoughts were on the, asking for a waiver. And I can basically just paraphrase this. He said basically, this has been looked at before, and really, when it comes down to it, if you're asking for the waiver, it's really up to the fire department to review the plans, to make sure that they believe the driveway is safe. I have not contacted the fire department, except for first selectmen. If we have to go to a larger radius, maybe 30 feet, to get their largest truck up, you know, we can do that, but we just can't do 50 feet. It's basically impossible. So this design I have right now is a 25-foot minimum radius. I do believe all of these radiuses can fit, you know, the smaller pumper trucks that are available in the department, but we'll go through a more stringent review once I finalize this design with the town engineer, and we can talk to the fire department directly. But we do need the waiver. We can't do much with the 50-foot or 45, 40. It's got to be like around 25 feet. So, this is the communication I got from, this is Jacobson. I just copied the email, a second.
My question, this lot here was approved as a building lot prior to the building change or the regulations?
Oh, yes. It's been a lot for quite a few years. There was, just for the history of the lot, there was interest by some conservation groups to buy it, but there was never any offers by them, and these people looked at other lots, and they kind of liked this one, so they bought this one.
So other than fire trucks being able to get up and down, is there any other safety concerns?
That's the only thing I could actually think of. I mean, we have to, the design is not complete. This is just a grid, design showing, design grades and contour grades. We'd have to put guardrails in to protect from driving off, fill in the excessive hill slopes down in this area. We have concerns about drainage, which is probably the biggest issue on this lot, is where is the drainage water going to go? And that has not been addressed yet. We will probably try and get some kind of detention area down here. This lot across the street has a lot of drainage going towards it from this entire area. If we came and dumped it in this catchphrase, and it's down at the bottom, that goes directly If we came and dumped it in this catchphrase and it's down at the bottom that goes directly across the street to this man's yard, we're not going to do that. That's not a good idea. Our idea is actually to try to take this drainage, he's getting a lot, and take it and store it and detain it so we solve both problems at the same time. That yet has to be done, but that is, it is probably the biggest concern on this lot at this, if we get the waiver.
The dwelling is going to be a single-story dwelling, correct?
Yes, yes. It's basically two small modular buildings. There, this is a ten by twenty, single-story modular building. One is a bedroom, the other one is a kitchen, living room, design of the deck in between. Very small. Again, even though it's a summer residence, it still has to be designed for year-round because they could sell it next year. It still has to be a safe, a safe access.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I have looked into it as far as our apparatus, there isn't a problem. We don't have a concern about the twenty-five foot radius for the fire department. You're right, the twenty-five, the fifty-foot is designed for the tractor drawn apparatus. You'd save the hook and ladder, which since Sam Crum and the Low Range Capital Planning has never agreed to buy one for this side of the river, I think it will be a long, long time before we see one on ours. Even the ladder truck that had, or that East Hampton has is a single piece unit, it's not the tractor drawn one. And again, given this, I've seen plans, originally these please were going to build another lot. I saw their plans for that. I assume it's basically the same thing here. It's a small, basically tiny house concept for weekends and summer, single story. We, fire department doesn't have any problem with it and ambulance would not be a problem getting up there.
Correct.
So they maintain a great property.
And also, the twenty-five foot centerline radius, it also handles septic tank trucks, concrete trucks, the small tractor trailer, the single trailers, they can all take the twenty-five foot radius in very easily.
All right, and the board of selection does have the authority to grant this waiver.
Is there not sorts of things?
That's a straight, not waiver.
I'll make a motion to waive the regulation.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, motions been made to grant the waiver. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's move on. Next item I've got on the list is the appointment of the economic development commissioner.
So currently we have three vacancies on the economic development commission and we received five applications. First, just start by saying thank you to everyone who came out and a bigger thank you to those who applied. This is an EDC, I think takes up a lot more time than people think it does and so to have this must give you so much interest, I think promising. It was a very tough decision. It was, there's a lot of qualified applicants and everybody definitely brings something different to me. So I will start off by saying, we, well, so we received applications from Robin Munster, Mark Lundgren, Tanya Moriarty, Mary Higish, and John Hemmer. Of those five individuals, my top three recommendations are Robin Munster, Mark Lundgren, and John Hemmer. I'll just go through everybody, starting from the top. So Robin Munster used to be our EDC coordinator when that was a part-time position. Robin dedicated a lot of time, well above and beyond for the position, after the position, and well beyond the hours that she was paid for. She had a lot of knowledge, you know, serving as the treasurer when that position was still open. She brings a lot of connections to the town. She did a lot of, she started a Facebook page. She kept our website updated. She kept in touch with a lot of businesses. We also received a letter of recommendation from Doreen Stasalounis, who is currently on EDC, just offering her support. Robin is familiar with challenges and opportunities. She's worked tirelessly, which I wholeheartedly agree with. Just some background about Robin, she's currently seated as chair of ZDA and was treasurer for ten years, recently leaving this position due to charter revision. She currently works as an office manager at Madison and said she'll be able to attend meetings on a monthly basis. Next was Mark Lundgren. Mark obviously has a long history here in town and he has shown a lot of dedication. I've seen him out and about at meetings. He actually came to our last meeting with a whole plan, a whole proposed plan to start bucket day, which in my eyes really showed initiative and it was, it was far beyond anything that I thought he was going to bring to me. When he said bucket day, I went, okay, bucket day. And then I saw what he brought and I went, oh, wow, you were kidding, bucket day. So just to see somebody jumping in like that, it's really, it's exciting. And, you know, he has already worn a lot of hats in town. I know he brings a lot of connections, knows a lot of people, knows a lot about the town. Next is John. So John actually came out, he saw the call to request on the website. Fortunately, we had the timing off a little bit, so we did miss the first part of our last meeting. He wrote a very wonderful letter. So he's actually, he's newer to town. He's lived here for a few years, February of 2018. The meeting that he came to was actually, it was pretty overwhelming for somebody who was showing up for the first time. He came to our meeting when we were doing a brainstorming session for our farmer's market. So in addition to the EDC members that were present, we had business owners in the audience. We had interested vendors, interested public, and John jumped right in the conversation. You know, it was open to public discussion and he was bringing up ideas. You know, he had no problem speaking up and sharing different opinions. He was not in agreement with some of the things we were recommending and he had no problem speaking up and stating his opinion. His background is actually in finance. I believe he worked, he's a commercial lender for Westfield Bank and a commercial real estate owner. So just with that experience, I'm recommending him. He's also, you know, bringing something new to the town. You know, as a newer resident, he's not bringing some of the biases that we see maybe from longer time residents who, you know, said, well, you know, well, I remember when it was this. He's not bringing that perspective. It's totally fresh. It's totally new. Another very qualified person we have was Tanya, and I know she also came recommended from Melissa Schlag, the chair of Haddon Democratic Town Committee. Just reading through her resume, she does bring some very positive experience. She writes a lot of grants. She was a former selectwoman herself. My concern with Tanya was it's, I wish I had a little bit more information about what she's interested in doing on EDC and why she was interested in joining in the first place. I just had a very short letter from her and her resume, which shows that she's very qualified. But the other applications that we received had a little bit more of a personal touch. You know, they really elaborated about why they were interested, or if they didn't state it in their letter, they came to their meeting and spoke out publicly and said why they were interested.
Was she a blessing?
She was, yes, yes.
Did Jeff ask why she wanted to be on?
She left right after the meeting. She didn't, she didn't really talk. I don't think she said anything during the meeting.
You know, she's a development coordinator, gives lots of opportunities for a nonprofit of those towns. Okay. Understand how you told me the way.
And then lastly, we have Mary. Mary Higish also came to our last meeting and sat in the audience. Very pleased and happy to see that people are seeing the advertisements and coming out to the meetings. Didn't get a whole lot of information from her. She actually says in her letter, well, I don't have any specific qualifications for serving on the board. I do have keen interest in the economic development of the town and I think right now, we just, with the state we're in and everything that's happening, as much as I appreciate her interest, I think we need somebody who can maybe verbalize their qualifications as they relate to this position. So those are my recommendations.
I wouldn't like to see you actually interview all candidates and they will be able to work with me. That's all I'm going to say on this.
And I will say, it's when Tanya and I talked after the December meeting, I did say, she came up to me and she said, you know, do you need more information from me? Because at that point, all I had was the letter, just saying that she was interested. And that's when I said, yes, I would recommend submitting your resume, talking a little bit about, you know, why you're interested and what you would write. And in response, I re-received the one-page resume.
What's John's last name?
Hemmer. P.E.M.B.E.R.
And he's been in town for two years?
Yes, February 2018. I will also say too, if I'm not mistaken, I do believe the three, my three recommendations are all registered as Republican.
Shaggy.
When I found that out, when I found that out, that kind of changed my mind a little bit and was making me really rethink my decision. While that would still be within the realm of the minority representation, that would leave about seven Republicans, two unaffiliated, and one Democrat, which I really, as much as I don't foresee, as much as I don't think EDC should be represented by political parties, at the end of the day, it's still, it's a fact. So once I found that out and once I realized that, I kind of had to take a step back and really think about that.
My concern is to make up the committee. It would be, as you said, six, but with those three are Republicans. It'd be six Republicans, it'd be two undecided, it'd be one Democrat. Does not violate the state minority representation rules. It's right on the edge. Six people from one party is what's allowed on a night member board. My recommendation at this point is that we approve Mark and approve Robin, because I think they're very well qualified. Personally, I would ask you in print to go back and interview the other two.
Okay.
If that's acceptable, I'd make a motion to approve the nomination of Robin Munster and Mark Lundgren to economic development committee and the third nomination to be filled hopefully the next board of selection. Okay, in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All right. Two in favor, one abstaining, motion carries. All right, two last items to discuss. We have a request from the Connecticut Cycling Advancement Program to conduct a use of local roads for a bicycle ride through there and they'll be coming down Bridge Road, left going southbound on one fifty-four to, I'm sorry, I don't have the layout laid out right here. Do you have any more comments? Bridge Road, Sabre Road to Dudley Clark Road, they get off one fifty-four Dudley Clark, take that to Old Chester and then they become Chester's Problem. I know they have done this before. I talked to the state troopers, they have no problems with the proposed route at the time. And I have a motion to approve their request for the local use of the road as stated in their request on the evolution. All right, any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Road use has been approved. Last thing I have on new business for the group is the AGS negotiations. They said the private school that's interested, their board went through the school last Monday. They want to continue, quit talking with us, negotiations, they are interested. We told them some of our desires for use of the community spaces and use of the playgrounds and such on a not to interfere after hours basis. They're agreeable to that, but now it's time to talk particulars. I would like the authorization from the board of selection to begin initial negotiations and come back to the board with an initial contract that's acceptable to both sides for approval. As I've said before, this has been required going to a town meeting, so this is only the initial steps planning. I don't mean to be on board with it, but I would like to start the negotiations and see if we can come to agreeable terms.
And we're going to be using, we signed that agreement to be using Tom Ford?
Yes. Yeah, one of the special board of selection meetings, we signed an agreement with a commercial real estate dealer, Tom Ford in Middletown. Bill Warner has worked with him extensively. Sean has worked with him. He comes very well recommended. Frankly, just in initial discussions, he made a suggestion to us, which I think will save us more than pay for his commission fees. So we're using him as the go-between, but I didn't want him to start sending conditions out until I had approval to start talking to the school about that.
I'll make a motion that we start negotiations, we all, right, you know, start negotiations.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. I think that covers all the business we have on the agenda. Any closing public comments? Mark?
Mark Lundgren, I want to thank you for the appointment to the economic development commission.
Okay. What a forward to your work. I'm sure you can get it on Mark. All right, Ed, you can be in a book and start your finish.
I started, and I had a couple of comments. Has to do with the position of EDC coordinator. Seven years ago, Paul tried it and it was a total waste of money and I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. That position should not be filled. If Robin was going to step down as EDC coordinator, or she was to volunteer to be the EDC coordinator, that's fine. With Bill Warner as our town monitor right now, we certainly don't need that expense. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. I think there's a misconception, I don't know whether I stated it or what, but this is to the economic development commission. These are all volunteers. Robin didn't take any volunteer position.
If she was, I have a lot.
Position ended.
Yeah, there was an economic development coordinator, which was a paid position, but that's not what we're talking about here. This is a commission or a committee, just like the charter revision.
But I just want to be sure you don't hire somebody else.
There's, I don't think we even have a position we could hire into right now. Okay, that has not been discussed at all, so. All right, any other comments? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor? All right, everyone, thank you for coming.